As required by the Unplugged Meetings Act of nineteen seventy-five, adequate notice was made of this meeting was provided on January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one by publication notice in Express Times and posting of said notice in this building on the same date. Mayor Barson?
Here.
Mr. Baylor?
Here.
Mr. Bean?
Yeah.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yeah.
Mrs. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Mr. Finelli?
Here.
Please stand.
The United States of America and the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, just like to ask everybody to keep in their thoughts and prayers, the people around Kentucky, Arkansas, Tennessee, and I think Illinois all got hit pretty hard. I see something like that makes me think if we're really ready or equipped to handle something like that that happens here, so let's hope and pray that it doesn't happen here, but keep them in their thoughts. If there's something that big, you're on your own for a couple of days, you can't depend on the state or feds because they're gonna be all over the place, so kind of scary thing. Girl Scouts can't make it, correct?
Correct.
Looking for a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from November eighth. Do you want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
Any corrections, conversations, discussions? Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mrs. McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to accept the treasurer's report and he sent it to all listeners, anyone make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Any second? Second. Questions, comments, discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mrs. McDermott?
Yes.
Actually, I'm using story reports for November twenty twenty-one, I'm gonna make a motion to accept it.
I'll make the motion.
Any second? Questions, comments, discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yeah.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mrs. McDermott?
Yeah.
Paul, do you want to do the Bubba's Works Report for Joe? Do we have anything to report?
Oh, there was no, there was nothing to report.
It is written pretty much.
Yeah, as it was written, and the other Paul we'll get to a little bit later on.
Okay. How was your first report? Do you want to talk about anything?
Um, I think that we're, I'm sorry, like two action items.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, yeah, so I just wanted to remind about setting budget meeting dates, and the only other action item I had was that Shannon and I had been talking for a few months about trying to go out for banking RFPs for next year, and she was having a lot of trouble finding a sample, I found one, and we are currently tailoring that to meet our needs and represent the township. Mike, is it appropriate that we do, if you guys are in favor of, you know, allowing us to go out for that for next year, that you review it when we're done and you could make the motion tonight? Just because we'd like to get ahead of it for the first few years possible, so.
So what, you want a motion?
To authorize us to, you know, advertise for the RFP for banking, we just, we feel like we're not getting services that we should be and open for some, you know, maybe better interest than the money that we do have, that sort of thing, and you know, if we don't get a better offer, at least they were at, but.
Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Anybody want a second? One second. Any questions, comments, discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mrs. McDermott?
Yes.
There is no U C report, she did not lose money.
Yes, that's good. Paul, Cory's report looks okay to you?
It looks okay to me, yes.
Okay. We'll hold the chief's report when he gets here, so I'm looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda for the DPW Township Clerk, the ECO, and attorney for, anyone want to make the motion?
Make the motion.
Anybody want a second? Any other comments, questions on it? Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mrs. McDermott?
Yes.
Committee reports? Anybody have any committee reports?
I don't know what we're doing later, you know, the topic is going to be. I don't know if that's being handed later or if you can do that now. I've got some things I want to put this on that.
Bring it up the desk.
Okay, all right, um. So I don't know if everybody's aware that the township issued a cease and desist to the former SMP trucking. Apparently, they're still violating the cease and desist. And according to our attorneys, we can't enforce, police can't enforce that, they can't enforce the overnight parking, they can't enforce staging during the day. So we're gonna have to make a decision, do we want to let them violate the cease and desist, or do we want to have the zoning officer go out there and start ticketing and removing the trucks during the day that are legally there? My preference would be to send them out there now. Actually, I asked for Larry to attend, was that ever communicated to him?
Um, yeah, he was not available for tonight. And also, if you look later on the agenda, he has actually resigned his position effective the end of the year, so.
Yeah, I understand, but yeah, he didn't get it right. Okay. All right, so.
I think you have a question about the cease and desist, how come we only sent one to that location? Was it through other places they were parking?
Well, let me know. I'll send it to them.
Brian, you mentioned several times that Rast and stuff had trucks that why did they get a cease and desist?
I think because the owner over there doesn't want them there, and he will call.
Do we know if the owner of the other property doesn't want them there? I think the guy's a mate, could be a victim there. Somebody's trespassing on his thing, and where you want to take action against them.
All right, but you approved the cease and desist, didn't you?
Yeah, I did, but after I read it and I realized, we didn't send it to everybody.
I don't think anybody else has that kind of an issue.
You guys.
Listen, I mean, I.
You both said Rast, I have no problem with the cease and desist.
The owner of that.
Why did we send it to only one business?
All right, so he got the cease and desist.
You never gave me an answer on that, I asked you three weeks ago, I said, let them contact the police, I've never heard that he did.
Okay, yeah, he said today he was gonna put something.
Well, it's three weeks later, so in the meantime, he should have a cease and desist, I guess, right?
Yeah.
I think we're in Rast today.
Pardon?
They were in there today, which is tough for turning around.
Anyway, go ahead, I'm sorry.
You want to send the cease and desist to Rast, then that's fine, but.
Right now, because I think he's being victimized, and I think the other guy's being victimized. You want to treat him, you want to villainize him. The owner, he doesn't, that just got sold, nobody else, nobody even knows that they're parking.
We sent them a cease and desist last Friday.
So did they get it yet?
Yeah.
Right.
Give her the phone number to the business.
I don't know.
I don't.
This is where the zoning officer should get involved and call up the owner, now?
I don't know.
We've been talking about this for at least two years.
I know.
All right, so the fact of the matter is, we have a cease and desist, they're still parking there, what do we want to do about it? Nothing?
Well, until we actually hear from the ownership, I don't know what we can or can't do.
What do you mean, John just said it's illegal, so we could go and send the zoning officer there, tell him to leave.
You want to send the zoning officer out and tell the trucks they gotta leave?
Yeah. I don't know. That's, that's the way John Drill explained that it has to be done, we are not allowed to send the police, my preference would be to send the police.
Well. If you're gonna send a zoning officer, at least think you should send the police, what does a zoning officer?
That's fine, I don't have an objection to that, but, um. Either we're gonna do something or we're not, that's just, I'm bringing it up.
I do want to, like, our zoning officer doesn't even have any credentials, like, he wouldn't have anything to show, so.
I would never suggest that he go out alone.
All right, so I'm hoping you're gonna have him go out at two in the morning, because we got.
When's he work now?
He works two things from six to eight P M.
But here's, here's the problem, my suspicion is those trucks rotate in and out every couple of hours, guys sleep for three hours, they leave, other ones back then, I assume you're a neighbor, because you keep taking your.
Yeah, I've been right around the corner.
Yeah, I agree, so you're gonna have, you know, I don't care, you want to get a zoning officer to go out there? Have you had so many hours, how do you want this?
Well, we were, I could bring it up at the budget meeting at the reorg, so I have some ideas on that.
One of the hours, six, six to eight, and then at nine o'clock, right, nine o'clock, our ordinance kicks in.
You know, it's six to eight P M.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it can only be two anyways, and then nine o'clock, our ordinance kicks in until six P M, or six A M, I mean, and we could start enforcing it that way, so. Like, that's when they have.
We started the enforcement issue though with our ordinance, you can remove them now, after nine, you're good?
Okay.
So that's, nine until when, six?
Yes.
But, yes, however, that, that issue that we have right now.
Actually, last meeting, if you remember, I brought up this place, money in place overtime budget, I suggested we use them to go out and do that, even if it's just in that area, I don't care, so.
Do you have the money and guys willing to work?
Uh, after talking to the CFO, she had to do a transfer to cover our salaries, because we're over, so we, I don't think we have that in overtime, that.
Can we do it, though, we're gonna do the transfer, Mike, they go in?
Now, Richie, how many of you guys are on at night from nine, nine T M to six A M?
Like, to talk about that stuff in public.
Yeah, I'd rather, uh, talk about that executive.
As I.
Just because I.
It's the same.
Talk about that.
I think.
So on the Tuesday, send them, at least just Tuesday, and then whenever, um, we can, we can enforce it from nine to six, right, five P M to six A M, if possible.
Yes, to the best of our ability. Other calls, what's not coming?
No.
But driving, yes, I mean, it's right now, the officers do that already, advise them, since that letter went out, of what to do with it. Our main problem is that there's no signage up there.
Yeah, we need.
So we're going through, we're advising the truckers, you know, they have no idea.
In the meantime, Rich, you did get the resolution from the county, correct?
Yes, for county property, yes.
I guess they did accuse of not doing anything, they did talk with the county, we do have a resolution where the trucks can't park in the county library or the canal, and they've authorized the police to remove those, so there's two properties taken care of.
Yes, and they're going to be.
If Rast would have called three weeks ago, that would have been taken care of.
They're parking in front of the library.
Yeah.
Well, that was, that's, I think we need to get, talk to the county about putting no stopping and standing.
I just.
There's that in front of the library, that whole stretch there. You know, I mean, that's the next option right there.
Yeah.
I think they're stopping and standing on the highway, you should feel right for that.
If they're stopping on five nineteen?
Yeah.
That's, that's a, that's separate than the county.
There's a big catch for that, for that one.
Excuse me?
They have to be in the roadway, there's not enough shoulders, so.
Oh, no, they're, they're off the road. But, but there's no sign that says no stopping or standing, that would eliminate.
Are they on the county property or on the roadway?
They're on the highway.
They're on the road.
Oh.
Yeah.
If they're on the roadway, there, it's a billy to, billy to park off roadway, so that's, that's a separate, so, some.
Also, roadway, we're not off the highway. Roadways are traveling portion, obviously.
Yeah, from burn to burn, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're parking it within the burn.
If, if that's the case, um, uh, from our, from our reports that were.
Well, the family's been very cooperative, I can make a phone call tomorrow, but the problem is, is you know, the government, they can't introduce the resolution until next month, the meeting is, that's what we, you know, so, but I will call them about that.
Yeah, if they're, if they're, uh, if they're parking and they're still in the roadway, we don't need a sign out there saying they can't stop.
Right.
So we will, we will enforce that if that is, that, uh, happening. I'm not aware of that.
You know what you're saying, I know you, because we know the difference between highway and road. And I think the general public knows that they're.
Right.
Yeah, so that, so we gotta watch, highway is, includes the grass portion next to the roads and stuff like that, that's all part of the highway. The roadway is a traveling portion where you actually drive, so roadway and highway is not synonymous.
Okay.
He knows that, I know that, I don't, Mike Finelli probably knows that, but. So back to the cease and desist, we don't have to find, if you're worried about giving the owner a chance, we don't have to find the owner, but we could send somebody there to move the trucks, we could just send them there to tell the trucks to leave and ticket the trucks if they have to, but.
We need to get a hold of them.
Well, nine to six, we don't even need the owner's permission, right, you can get them out of there. You don't.
Correct, we can get them out there.
During the day either. There's a cease and desist, but that's.
Right, but we're not.
Can't just raise your hand, you gotta wait until public.
During the day, as John said, it's just a, it's a zoning thing, we can't just go on to.
I'm not, I'm not mentioning the police to go.
But, um, yeah, now that we've been moving them, the problem, like, as far as issuing them, if they pull in there and there's no sign telling them they can't be there, we're gonna advise them to move along, they can't be there. If we, they don't move along, we'll cite them, or the officers have the ability to cite them. But we can't, if they have no knowledge of it, we, we kind of, we can't enforce it because they don't know.
When the cease and desist letter, I had the attorney having a higher class, asking the owner, if you are unaware of this, will you please authorize the police department to enforce parking regulations there, so I'm hoping he's gonna get in contact with us. If somebody wants to reach out to him, perhaps they'll reach out to him, try to get a hold of him ahead of time, I don't care, but.
I did reach out to him prior to our last meeting, um, and left a voicemail, I didn't hear back from him, he is the, the new owner of the property. With, with everything going on, it did not follow up with giving another call.
Just so everybody knows, that cease and desist also asked me to put up a fence, so that, if they put up a fence, solves everything, you don't have to go, zoning officer doesn't have to go, you just won't go in, it's not being used, the property. So that would solve everything. So I don't know, so.
I don't, I don't know, I don't, we don't even have the facts, have we gotten a receipt?
I don't, I think, but I.
We don't know if they got it.
But John sent it, so it would go to John.
No, but it was a request.
I always think the easiest path is to call people first and see.
No, it was, if you read this, the cease and desist, it was a request, it's not a legal demand that we can make. It was just a request to the owner, so if he doesn't want to do it, I don't think there's anything we can do, but, um, we did just want to mention that we did request that, too. So, I don't know what the, what the plan is there, my preference would be to send a zoning officer, but.
I have no problem sending a zoning officer, but I would stipulate that the police go with them.
Yeah.
That's fine with me. But I don't know how we, I mean, we could talk, I mean, Larry's done at the end of December, and we could talk about it during the budget meeting, because I did have some ideas on trying, you know, we already talked about.
I've said, once you know, that we need to spend the hours and the salary and the duties of that position.
Exactly, so I'll, I'll, I have some other ideas, but we could talk about it at the budget meeting.
If you would like the, the class two officer, I could schedule one during that Tuesday night when the zoning officer's working, if you want an officer to go in like that, to make sure that someone's there.
Um, yeah, but how many weeks we got left in this year? We're, we're.
Well, next, to Christmas, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
Two Tuesdays.
Probably, and worked it at this, I mean, yeah, I mean, if Larry's willing, if, if we want to direct Larry to do it, I'm fine with that, absolutely.
Just to secure us a little, um, and, and, you know, protection, make sure that it's there, because it happens on a Tuesday night and.
Yeah, no, 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 yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I understand your, your concern, and, uh, and, and, yeah, the mayor's recommendation has an officer there, so, um, do the best we can to do that, I think that would be the best thing to do.
So do we want, are we gonna, is that what we're doing, with directing Larry to go there?
Direct Larry to go with them, and if that guy's not available, I'm okay if you have to pay a guy overtime to stay for two hours, but I'll leave that up to everybody else inside.
I'm okay with that as well, as long as they go on.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
And I still say for last month, if we, well, you don't have the money to do it, I wish you had the money, I would say, put the guy out there on overtime and ride up and down there all night, I don't care.
When we come to our monthly report, I'll just highlight some of it.
Okay, well, you're actually up.
I saw there, oh, no, you're not, we're in his report. Yeah, yeah.
I was thinking we're still in the consent.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I put it out there, I have a lot to cover, I have a lot of things I want to go over with this, we could do it in a special meeting if you want, or we could do it tonight.
Let's, let's go back to him, those are the thing, and then I think it's gonna come again with these proposed ordinances, right?
Yeah, I did have one thing that might not be on there.
Okay.
Um, Mike, did you want to talk about, so, just wanted to fill everybody in, so everybody knows there's the new warehouse on Strikers Road. Everybody knows that all of a sudden the truck traffic has gone through the roof, I think we know why it went through the roof, it's because they have a new tenant, US Postal, who indicated they're gonna go eight hundred plus trucks a day over there, plus, well, Pat Conley is forcing all the trucks to make a right-hand turn into Greenwich. So it's an issue that we have to decide whether or not we want to deal with it or not. A lot of these issues are just gonna take taxpayer money if we want to address it, this is not something that's gonna go away. We're gonna have to make some hard decisions on how much we want to put into fighting this, because I could tell everybody, we're probably at thirty percent capacity right now, of all the surrounding warehouses that are gonna eventually get built and filled. And it's already a problem in our area, so what I recommended, Mike looked into, was getting a truck counter there, because I'll guarantee you that they're well over and above what they presented at the land use board meeting for the PacCon. They didn't present eight hundred plus trucks a day, I'll guarantee it, and proof of that is that they don't even have enough room at the warehouse to stage the trucks, they have to stage them in other places, and when you go in for a warehouse approval, part of that approval is you have to have enough staging to support the warehouse, they don't have enough staging to support the warehouse, they're staging off-site. So there's obviously a problem there, they misrepresented themselves, in my opinion, it's my opinion, they misrepresented themselves to the planning board of Will Paccon. So I personally think they were legally, have, they have an illegal tenant there that made the truck traffic go above and beyond what they are allowed. Now, we could decide to let it go and not do anything, or we could decide to, let's see how bad the problem is, let's get a traffic count, and then if we see that the traffic count is what we think it is, which is way through the roof, then we need to make the decision on how we want to pursue fixing that problem. Maybe it's just a letter to the Little Paccon Land Use Board, letting them know, I don't know if you know this, but your truck traffic count is way through the roof over what you, what they presented. It might just be that, that might be enough, I don't think Will Paccon, I don't think the residents of Paccon want that many trucks over there either, just.
Well, Pat's aware of the eight hundred a day.
Well, but the residents.
Can I, can I, well, yeah, I guess.
Because, because the company came to Little Pat and here, asking for help for this month because of that issue, so they're well aware.
The government, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the government, yes, so I don't know that the land use board.
But I, I guess the question is, what, in a month from now, they go back to their normal usage, are they gonna be out of use, I mean, I, I think, you know, we're, we're jumping the gun here, our understanding, the information we have right now is that the United States Postal Service is using it, like, no sense in and because it's Christmas, they get more mail, obviously, and wasn't there a fire or some of the Carney plant? Carney Postal Facility?
Yes.
And that, they are using us to make up for that, they, they were, they came and said what they, what they needed, they said they have eight hundred trucks a day gonna come in and out. They asked for help from the police departments to help guide it, they were looking for, I'm not defending them, my point is, I think we're jumping the gun, saying we want to take these legal actions, that it may go away on January, by the time we get all of our court issues in, it could be over.
I did, you mentioned legal actions, I never mentioned.
Okay, let's, let's, okay, let's, let's make a motion, let's send a letter to Little Paccon, advising them that we feel that this is out of the usage that was presented to us, we would have objected to this type of track, I have no problem with it.
They can pull their.
Yeah, but I.
For fraud.
But I don't know that.
We have to.
You guys, you guys talk easily, like, it's fraud, I don't know, is it fraud when you go in and you're asking to use, it seems we're talking legal issues here, like litigation here. Is it fraud when you go before boarding, you say, we're only gonna have three hundred trucks a day? And then one of your facilities burns down, you've got a crunch time coming, it's a month, and you're gonna do it, and you're upfront about it, is that fraud?
I don't know, why is that, was it there, the owner's facility that burned down, or US Postal Service? Well, that's, that's the owner, the, US Postal does not own that, the Little Paccon. You said that one of their facilities burned down.
The postal service.
Yeah, but I don't care about the postal, the postal service has nothing to do with this, it's the owner.
Certainly do, what are you gonna say?
No, it's the owner, no, it's the owner that took on the tenant that is violating, you don't think there's enough warehouse space over on Route twenty-two for them to move some of it, like?
I don't know what they do with, I'm sure there's machines in there and stuff where they process this, I'm not defending that.
They had, I'm just saying that the machine.
Is there, this is a situation that can possibly be four weeks long.
Yeah, but to me, it's unacceptable.
Yeah.
To me, it's unacceptable, that residents have to go through this every year, is that what we're gonna say?
Who said every year, see, you, you interject what you think.
Are they not a tenant there, are they leaving, I don't know, did you hear they're leaving after?
Are you not listening?
Yeah.
They called and said, we're gonna do it for a month because of the holiday season in our facility, I would think in a year. Now, if you want to send letters saying that, we understand, this was an emergency for you, you had to process the mail, and you came here, we don't want to see that again, so by next December, have it fixed.
I think you're jumping the conclusion that they're gonna leave, and this is temporary.
Oh, I'm gonna buy what somebody presented to me, I'm not here to call anybody a liar, they called, why would somebody call and report themselves that I'm gonna continually send eight hundred trucks?
Because the US Postal's not, they're not responsible for it, so they did the right thing, good for them, the owner is the one that's violating, not US Postal. It's not up to US Postal to say whether or not they're allowed to use the facility, it's the owner that's supposed to say, hey, I only got X amount of square footage that you're allowed to use. The owner didn't do that, the owner said, yeah, you could go above and beyond, go ahead, bring it in, that's my problem.
I don't know if the owner even said that, they came to us looking for, I don't know if they told the owner they're gonna have eight hundred more in a month, I mean, you, you just, you just interject what you think. You just told us, the other day, the other day you quoted me, you, I said, where'd you hear that from? Because I'm talking to officials, they, we said, oh, I read it from the, I read it on a post on the internet.
Okay, guess, guess who else posts on the internet? Freeholder CHL's a post on the internet, Freeholder Kern posts on the internet, Paul posts on the internet.
That's not a good source.
I, I, why, Paul's not a good source?
Well, if it's on the internet, it must be true, is that what you're talking?
No, I say we need to research it, you don't seem to want to research it.
I'm willing to research it.
Okay, so.
You're up there spewing off.
You're doing off what?
Like it's fact.
All right, listen.
The place came and admitted, there's eight hundred, so I'm saying you can't wait until.
Let's not blame anybody, let's not blame anybody, let's not blame anybody, the, this is what's existing right now.
You started blaming me already before this meeting, but go ahead.
All right, you don't want me to bring up your post, you don't want me to bring up your text to me, so why don't we just leave it there?
Can we, can we talk about this in the technical, please?
That was private, I didn't bring it up to them, like, private, but, okay, but, um, what I'm saying.
You can bring up anything, I'm not afraid to say anything, I say in public, I talk here every month, pretty freely, I think.
Well, leave it at that.
No, you know, I'm not afraid of you, bring it on, buddy.
I'm not gonna bring, I'm not like you.
I don't bring private texts, I'm. I think if we have any more discussion about that.
Let's just send a letter.
I'm okay with sending a letter.
Let's just send a letter. Acknowledging, and then, like Bob said, something has to be fixed.
I agree, let's send a letter, that we're not in agreement with it, it's way above.
We don't want it to happen next year.
It's gonna be a seasonal issue. Then that's, yeah.
Let's do that.
It was thrown on us last minute.
Mike, is that something you could do?
I think I'll, I'll call John, and just, they're just, you know, because it's getting sent to Little Paccon, and my office, my partner represents it, so.
Thank you.
Either Lisa or I will make sure John sends that.
If we, if we needed to do a traffic count eventually, would, uh, is there anywhere where we could put like a trail camera instead, or it would be cheaper?
Well, I.
Because the road counter, they'll just rip off.
I can't answer the cheaper question, unfortunately, I did.
Well, it took the, it's counter, well, you won't know, they definitely go that at warehouse, if that's what you're looking.
You're, you're.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, you're gonna have to get permission to put it, rolling out through driveway.
Well, you could also do this, you could put it in Greenwich across Strikers, and then you would have to do, um, some daily inspections and basically take the normal Strikers Road truck traffic, take counts of how many, on, on average, with that, have nothing to do with warehouse, and then, let's just run nice round numbers. Let's say the traffic counter's picking up a thousand trucks a day, and we count, um, on, on the average of a hundred normal trucks traveling Strikers, well, then you can, you can legitimately say, and it was scientifically, the counter's picking up a thousand, we, we counted a hundred on an average day, so the warehouse is generating nine hundred, and, and do it that way, then we don't have to get into Little Paccon at all, because the, the counter would be over the bridge in Greenwich.
Okay.
That's an option, uh, there are, there are cameras, like you said, by.
I think the camera would obviously be.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the best.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't know that, I know the area, but I don't know where we could position one where we could just see the traffic that comes.
Yeah, I, I've talked this week to a traffic count company. Um, a, a traffic engineer that I work with on other projects. Um, and talk about cost and timing and so forth, so, um. And they, they both mentioned the, the camera. As a counter, because that's about, they said the only bad thing about it is that, that the file size is just so ridiculously big. Uh, you know, they're collecting all that data, but, but, yeah, it's nothing you can't manage.
Do you, did you get the traffic study that they did for our warehouse?
No.
You said it, I, did you get it?
Yeah, they're all.
I asked her to get it, I, I don't even know how to read that, so.
We were gonna ask it tonight, you wanna look at it?
Here's the issue. When, when are you gonna put the camera out? Will you put the camera out? And it stops at fifteen, you're, you're gonna be, you know what I'm saying?
No, I didn't.
And I'd like to chime in on the subject matter, and, and I agree that. You know, they've come to us with a, a potentially of a one-month problem, whether it goes back down to the numbers that it is. Uh, I certainly visualize them parking on, visually seen them parking on five nineteen, I've seen them in SMP's lot. I have, not recently, but I have seen them in Rath's lot, uh, you know, and I'm not defending that on any occasion, but. Two and a half, three weeks ago, when they first started to do this volume of trucks, it was, it, it was a mess. Um, with that being said, they've somewhat solved their own problem because it's no longer the mess that it was. They're not lined up outside, they're lined up two in a row, all the way down around their warehouse. Um, I don't know quite how they, I, I understand the ones that are staging are waiting for their time to go pick up, but I don't know that for a fact. Um, but it has gotten way better, including a lot of the truckers are now using Route fifty-seven. To come into that facility, not twenty-two, five nineteen.
I don't see how that's possible. That light doesn't even allow that. That light is so bad.
No, not if you're, if you're on fifty-seven and you want to make the right onto Strikers. You know, that, there's an extended period of time, but the point being is, a lot of traffic, because. If I was a truck driver and, and I have to come into that facility on a daily basis, I would do anything to avoid. The twenty-two, five nineteen intersection because it's, it's a mess. One truck, one this, one that. Well, it's way easier to come down Route fifty-seven and make a right. I think a lot of the repetitive drivers have started to figure this out because, again, I work right there, my office is right there, I see this on a regular basis now. And a lot of trucks are coming in and making the right, and then going into the right. There's still hundreds that are coming in twenty-two and five nineteen. But I think as time goes on, you're gonna see a lot of them self-move themselves over. Because twenty-two and five nineteen eastbound is a mess, westbound is fine. You know, they come in, they hang the right, and that's not a problem. So, some of the people are going to solve it in themselves, and then hopefully if it goes back down to the three hundred and eighty or so that they're allowed, whatever the number is. The problem doesn't go away, but it lessens. You know, and that's just my current observation. And, again, my shop is a quarter a mile from my home, my office is a mile and a half from my home. Every day for the last three weeks, I go up Greenwood Street, out to twenty-two, down five nineteen, up Strikers Road. You know, I'm traveling six, seven miles to go to work when I only used to have to travel a mile. Um, just to visualize this on a daily basis, and my timeframe is everywhere is between six in the morning and seven thirty in the morning. So, I'm seeing it there, I try to travel as much as I can in the afternoon. Uh, I see a significant improvement. And if this is a one-month problem. That's challenging situation, but maybe the rest of the problem rectifies itself.
That one facility is the one month problem, but any, any warehouse that's built north of here, that's gonna be a problem.
It's gonna be a problem.
Five nineteen, make a, go, uh, west on fifty-seven, they're gonna make a left on the Strikers, come across and go up to Route twenty-two. I don't deny that. I'm not talking about this one facility. In the, in the future, we have a problem there. If they put two more warehouses on Striker, that's funny, sir. I'm not against all this. My point is, for the last three weeks. I don't even know what happened, but I look for long-term solutions. Last month's meeting, I asked for, and everybody agreed to have, have our attorney look into. Closing Strikers Road now. But I never thought that was gonna happen in three days or a week. Everybody knows how government is, it's two-year process and twenty thousand dollars. And you're gonna have opposition, obviously, Lopec's not gonna, so you can go ahead. But we have issues coming down the line. I have no problem addressing the issues. I have problems with the way it happened in the last two to three weeks. And how nasty and vile and vulgar it got behind everybody's back, that nobody's doing nothing, nobody's supporting anything. And that is totally untrue. And I'm offended by what I heard from people, from what people said. Not this, there's not a situation where no one wants to take action here. But I'm, I go by what's legal, logical. It's a process, I understand that, takes patience. I understand if you live where probably Kathy is. A year, two years is too long, wait, but the fact of the matter is, this is not getting resolved in the month of December. Or January, or February, or twenty-twenty-two, or twenty-twenty-three. This is a long, long process. And all I'm saying is, we need to sit down, like you suggested, maybe next month, a meeting of just this topic. And see where we want to go and how we want to handle it for the future. But the last three weeks, the way it was handled is a joke. That's enough said by me, but.
Can I make one point real quick?
No.
Well, no, on, on this traffic report.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm, I'm, actually, I looked at the post development, there's two reports. There's the one that appears to have been submitted, I'm, I'm gonna assume with the site plan application, and traffic impact study. And then the post development, traffic impact study. So that, I looked at the post development first. Uh, and just read the cover letter and looked at the conclusions and so forth. I, I don't know if this really is worth much to us, because it was done, that. The post development counts were done in early October. Now, I don't know when the postal office came in there, cause that's what it's all about, let's balance.
I, I can't read much, but it's obviously after.
Well, so, okay, so therefore, to, to, to put much credence into this study. Existing circumstances, it doesn't make sense.
No.
So, I mean, we can, I can look at some of the, the, the.
Pretty much a given. By the postal office's own admission.
Well, if they did that.
When did they, did they do that?
And last meeting, they, they had recon, our police department, Lopec's police department for assistance. They're looking for a staging area, they're willing to pay police overtime to watch it. Help regulate how many trucks go in, how many go out in an hour and stuff, which in, 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 uh, looking back. I think we're remiss by not buying into that a little bit and getting involved and probably will handle the flow of traffic much better. So, if there was any failure here by this committee, it was in the last month when we didn't direct the chief. To try to get into some negotiations to regulate that. We, we dropped the ball on that.
What, what I also found interesting, and I have to say. My, Finelli Consulting plans are in these reports. From, from the Strikers Road project of a long time ago, they just obviously got their hands on the plan. I mean, I clearly, when I saw it, I'm like, oh, that's nice. It's a nice plan. No, it's, that's from when, when we changed the, um. The angle of the intersection of Strikers and put a turning lane in and so forth, so, it's, uh. So you want me to keep looking, just look for, uh, the proposed. The proposed counts per the original traffic studies, see what we got here, compared to, okay. Carry on, I'll, I'll chime in when, when I got it.
We're done talking about this for now? Done, right?
I'm done.
Okay, Rich, your report.
Okay, start with the monthly report. One of our highest call volumes for the year, is one thousand three hundred meetings calls. Last, uh, geez, we've been pretty busy, I believe it was last weekend. We had a armed robbery up on the highway gas station. And, uh, like, the, the previous weekend, and then we also had a, uh, an eluding, uh. Driver in the township, which took up a lot of time, but, um. Hopefully, uh, we're gonna be making an arrest for the robbery soon. Our tickets, uh, totaled a hundred and ninety-seven summons this last month. Sixty-three of those sums is were truck traffic, state statute issued for, uh. North Main Street, South Main Street, uh, that includes one seventh grade. Uh, and we had a one local ordinance, uh, the local ordinance, uh, truck overweight. Is only, uh, we only have an overweight on, uh, Washington Street and, uh, Dumont, I believe, so. There's not a lot of truck traffic on those two roads as opposed to the other roads. Those, uh, those other roads are the ones that are heavily traveled by trucks. Um, so, that was, uh, that was quite a bit of, uh, uh, summons this issue. Uh, we had twenty-one arrests. And, uh, one drunk driving arrest. Um, was there any other questions on the monthly report? That was just some of the, uh. The major highlight areas. We did have a high month in accidents here, from seven highs that we've here so far. Any questions on that monthly report? Overtime, or, uh, the overtime, uh, as I said last month, um. We, uh, we were hit with, uh, some COVID problems and whatnot, so, uh. I was able to curtail over the overtime with the class two, however, um. This month, it's anticipated it's gonna be going up just because, uh, he's strictly on truck enforcement this month. Um, the only other month that I used him for that was September, I said last meeting, uh, just because we are, uh, we are hit with manpower problems right now, so. We'll see what the, uh, the numbers look like this month, um. So, usually with the holidays, they do go down, but, uh, uh, the officers know, uh. You know, the problems that, uh, that the residents and, uh, and the, many, as with the traffic issues, so. Um, they are out there. Was there any questions on the overtime report? Uh, and, and last. Last with the, uh, you're mentioning with the, uh, the study. When I went out to, uh, when they. Invited the, uh, the chief from Lopec and myself to go out there to that facility. I believe it was the, the day of our meeting last month. Gave you the information, and I believe what they said, and, and I don't know if everybody knows, that that. Facility was put up, um, without a usage, and then the postal office came in there. And it was, I, I guess, I'm assuming a couple of months, uh, prior to November, I don't know for sure. But it wasn't, from my understanding, it wasn't primarily built for the postal, uh, office. Um, so I don't know what, uh, what exactly the planning board was told over there in Lopec, but that's my understanding.
Chief, excuse me for interrupting. The, what I had heard, as far as the, what the use was. Was gonna be, when it first got, you know, when it was gonna open up, was mattresses. Uh, you know, obviously that didn't play out, but that's what I heard, I, and, and I thought, I said, you know what? That's good, because I'm thinking, okay, that would be a lower truck volume kind of, of, uh, you know. Use, if you will. I mean, you know, with, uh, if you're selling or delivering mattresses. But obviously that didn't happen, but that's what I heard for five, forget who, but.
And, uh, I did have, uh, the letter sent over from the, from the county for the, uh, no parking. On their property in, uh, as the mayor mentioned, on the canal, um. So, it's, I, I believe it's on the agenda to, um, add that to our, uh. Our ordinance, because they're, they're giving us permission to, to, uh, to issue and to tow vehicles. Uh, but they want to coordinate to get signage out there first. Um, and by way of the letter, I understand that towing would be. I assume charged the county, and then the county would be reimbursed by the operator of that vehicle. Cause the problem with towing, when it comes to private property. We don't, uh, tow vehicles for, for just any, because we are stuck with that fine. If that vehicle's not picked up for the storage. And the storage of a tractor trailer, if we tow a tractor trailer and say they, you know, it's, I, I doubt that the owner of the tractor trailer is. Gonna say, oh, forget, I don't want the truck, but if they leave that in the impound yard, we're gonna pay the tow fee, we're gonna pay the storage fee for that. Storage fee every day. And we've gotten burnt on this before, where we towed, um, unregistered vehicles out of lots, and we got hit with. Some pretty hefty fines to pay those tow companies, because it was towed out of our authority. However, um. With this, uh, resolution that the county passed, um, I'm glad to see that they had in there about the, the fines there, so.
Well, I, I just think what the chief said is, is exactly what our problem is. There are so many problems. This is so voluminous that. The county wants trucks removed, but we gotta add the language right. That's why I'm saying, you, you gotta, I don't have a problem having this meeting next month. But you, we gotta put together all the disciplines, zoning, police. We gotta get all the wording right. If you're gonna require businesses to put up signs, we gotta come up with wording for the signs that he finds enforceable. But the way we're hitting now is every month, there's three new proposals. Let's put a law against that, let's put a law against that. And then after we pass the law, we find out, we can't enforce the damn thing. So how many laws we gonna put on the books? We, we went through all the things to increase the fines, they're only applicable for like three roads, because the county has to do theirs. So I think what we need to do, this has, we have to meet with other, other jurisdictions around. This is not talking about the impact of that, ironically. Steve Pat will stop my house the other day, to say how I was doing when he's leaving, truck goes by, he stops it. Even the ticket, where do you think it was headed? The postal office. So it's impacting everywhere in town. So to sit there and say that someone doesn't care, because it's not affecting their part of town. It's affecting everyone. It's gonna affect everyone forever. But we gotta come up with a logical and intelligent plan, not just like, there's a truck in there, we need to pass a law. Up, there's a truck down there, we need to pass another law. We need to come up with a plan where everything's worded right, the signage is right, so it's enforceable. And we, we know what's going on. Right now, we, for the past four or five months, I don't know how many laws we've passed, how many notices we've passed. Trying to correct this. We're running out with chickens or heads, run, uh, cut off. Like I said, the last three weeks is totally absurd, I think, what was going on. It, it's not gonna be solved by January fifteenth, I'm sorry. That's my only point here. And I don't know why it got so nasty, why it got so personal, that people weren't doing things, they don't care. It's, it's not an easy resolution. This is a couple-year project. And it's not just ours. We gotta meet with Lopec, Powhat, up, up county, you know what I mean, with the county freehold. We need to get together, as all the municipalities, to go to the state. Cause a lot of this is gonna be resolved through infrastructure. You're not gonna, you're not, the trucks are never gonna work. If anybody thinks you're gonna shut down the warehouse, it's crazy. It's gonna go with infrastructure. So you gotta get municipalities and the counties on the same page. Go to the local state representatives, to go to DOT for funding to build in alternate routes, to avoid these routes. One suggestion is to put a road from Strikers out to twenty-two directly. That's gonna be tens of millions of dollar project. We certainly can't afford it. Lopec can, can afford it. That, that's what we're talking here. And that road's not going in for ten years. So are we gonna run here every month, crazy about this stuff? Now, I, I have a problem addressing what an issue is. The Rast Valley is an issue, SMP's an issue. But in the last month, people wanted to have the emergency meetings, like, we're running around, like, I don't know, I, I'm just very disappointed in their acting. But I'm more disappointed on how personal it got, but anyway, you done? What, have I made questions or comments? Hey, when I make a motion, accept the police department report. Anybody want a second? They got any questions or comments? Any more committing, you were done with your preliminary words, you have anything else, a little bit space or whatever?
Um, the, is the sewer main, the forced sewer main that we have to?
You can do it now.
No matter what.
It's, but it's under correspondence, so if Bob wants to handle this new business, it's up to him.
But, yeah, it's about the affordable housing.
Oh, you, okay. Oh, what do you wanna do?
No, we have to, well, I might as well explain to everybody. So apparently John and the, uh, the, uh. Contractor, Ingerman. Um, they're being told by the county that. They, they ask me, the town has to, uh. Enforce, uh, has to maintain, uh, for, so Mike might be able to explain it better, but the county, that, or the county is saying that we have to maintain the forced sewer.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a little longer, a little more different than that. Okay. The issue of the ownership of the sewer certainly came up during our review at the land use board. Uh, this, this sewer system. And they've got obviously the onsite collection and then it's out to Greenwood Street. And it goes up Greenwood Street for a little while and connects to an existing manhole actually in, in an easement on Greenwood Chase property. That it's also happens to be the same manhole that the Lowe's sewer main connects to. All right. I basically said at that point that it would be appropriate for the, the owner, the user, in other words, Ingerman, to maintain, to be responsible for the maintenance and not have it fall on township's shoulders. Because that is actually consistent with what we've done for other private entity developments. You name it, all the commercials privately owned and so, okay. So they, they, they were fine when they being Ingerman. However, it then went to the county. They relayed that to the county and county said unacceptable. We're not gonna, we don't wanna deal with a private entity. So that then obviously the only real other option is for the township to, to, to be the responsible party. Now, we have a sewer operator that owns, you know, all on, uh, not on hire, but it works for the township, Chapman, as our sewer operator. It's really a very relatively short piece of main we're talking about. This is only the main along into county right away on Greenwood Street. So John and I have talked a few times about it and, and,
This requires like a pump station?
Yes. Well, now the new one does. Yes. The new one, there's a pump station. Now, the, I mean, they'll have their own maintenance company doing the onsite stuff. This really applies primarily to the, the sewer main on Greenwood Street. After it exits the pump station on their site up Greenwood Street to tie into the manhole in Greenwood Chase. So John was basically saying like, there's, we're gonna, the town's gonna have to take care of it because of, of the obviously the affordable housing component and this, this issue, the county's basically saying they don't wanna hear about it. Otherwise, so I, I basically, okay, I said if that, if there's no choice in the matter, there's, there's no reason the township can't do it. It, it was just, it's, it's a, a tad inconsistent with other private developments that we've done. We, we've, we handle all the residential, uh, the Greenwood Chase Winter Farm sewer system. But anything beyond that, you name it, it's privately maintained. Home Depot shop, right? McDonald's, it lists.
So what are we responsible with? The pipe clogs, we gotta get somebody to come with the dip clogger machine and decal.
Exactly.
Anywhere else in the street.
If it's within that section of the pipe.
Pump breaks, now we're not responsible.
Correct. Yeah, so.
We, we need a motion then for, for the town to take over.
For the township to agree to be the responsible, uh, party for operation and maintenance of the sewer main in Greenwood Street for the Ingerman development.
That, that means that we're gonna be required to do, as simple as what we do everywhere else up there.
Yeah, well, and, and the other part, it's, it's a pressure, it's a pressure main too. So it's a small diameter pipe. You know, and it's a short distance. It's a few hundred feet.
Mayor Barstain?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
No, the stuff's coming up later. I'm good.
Correctional reports, Mike. Uh, no, I got one. I really only, I had one thing, but now, but you dumped another thing on me. So let's get, let's get to the, the traffic study that was submitted with the site plan and what the estimates were.
Okay.
Okay. Basically, I'm looking at a figure in the report. And it's entitled twenty twenty-two future peak hour traffic volumes with development. Okay, so these are the projected traffic numbers, uh, on Strikers after the, the, the warehouse is built. There's an AM and a PM peak, so I'll give you both. The AM peak is three twelve. The PM peak is three thirty-five and that is making the right out of the exit drive, uh, up Strikers, which is really what we're talking about.
Three thirty-five what?
Three hundred thirty-five vehicles.
Per day?
Per, uh, no, per hour. That's a peak, that's a peak volume, uh, per hour. It's, so it's gonna be, you know, the PM peak is probably, uh, but it doesn't need necessarily have to be.
How do they come to what they should have a day? Cause I guess that's the issue.
Well, well.
Or is that too?
No, I don't think. I think the, I think the issue is what they presented and what the difference is.
What were they saying that they were gonna?
Well, there, I, let's just say, let's, let's average amount, uh, between AM and PM. You're like three twenty.
Okay.
So the, what was presented from, again, you saw how long I've looked at it. It's just a quick review. It, they presented, I'm sure there's testimony on the record in Low Pat.
We're talking trucks only. This doesn't include cars too.
No, it's trucks.
Okay.
Exactly. So, so it's, that's the number, three, three, three twenty.
So they basically said we'd have three hundred twenty trucks a day.
Yeah, PM, that's a P, no, 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 no. That's the P and peak. That's the peak hour. So, yeah, it's not, it's not per day.
So if they're having eight, I hit the, they're having eight hundred a day. And then under three hundreds in that peak hour, are they in compliance? Mike, I don't understand that because obviously, if that were the case.
Question, right?
Right. So if that were the case, Mike, that would mean that they would have to have enough staging at the site to handle it.
Yeah.
Obviously, they don't have enough staging at the site.
Well, so, yeah, I wanna hear, correct.
Right. So to me.
So you're saying they don't have enough for the three hundred that they said they were?
Whatever they, whatever they presented.
Yeah.
They, obviously they don't have enough staging for it. So.
That's seems to be correct, yes, I would say.
That's, I mean, that's all.
Unlike, you said.
That doesn't sound.
Peak AM three twelve, peak PM three thirty-five. So you add those together for your daily, like where, they said eight hundred per day. Are we getting that right?
Yeah, Mike, you're saying like, you're saying thousands.
That's what I'm. That's what it's showing. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I can show you the drawing. Um, where, and that's, that's what. Here's.
So what would that come out to with that?
Well, no, 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 you can't. It is the peak, the peak is, is, is a, is a spike. It could be very, it could be very extended.
They don't have to present, all right.
No, no. And that would be what? They can't do that?
I don't know.
I, I don't understand what this is saying either.
I mean, to me, it's just, if you just put two and two together, they don't have enough staging for what they presented. So to me.
Well, they kind of admitted that, right?
Yeah, yeah. So to me, yeah, they gotta be way off of their estimate. Otherwise, I don't know how a land use board would say your estimate is this, but you have staging for a lower amount. Makes no sense. So I don't know.
Yep. Okay. The vehicular trip generation. Trucks. Three twenty-seven.
For what? Peak or day?
Or day.
No, that's daily.
There you go. Three hundred twenty-seven truck a day.
Three twenty-seven, yeah, that's.
They setting hundred now.
Can we send something, Mike? Just requesting Low Pat look at this.
Yeah, that, that's, that's, yeah, send them a letter saying, you know.
Because obviously.
Through their own admission.
Obviously, this application that they.
The only reason I mentioned the truck counter.
They probably wouldn't have approved.
I think, the only reason I mentioned the truck counter. John was saying we needed to prove it.
Well.
Yeah, that, that saying eight hundred trucks a day was hearsay.
But we don't need them for a letter. I mean, we're gonna send those.
Well, I just wanna try to explain to you why I said the counter, because John was advising that. If we said eight hundred a day, it's hearsay.
Yeah.
They're gonna say that, that's like anecdotal, that's not good enough.
Yeah.
That's why we were thinking we need truck counter. That's the only reason I brought it up. So if we wanna make that case and we wanna say, look, it's not that, it's hearsay, we have.
Counter, trail camera.
Yeah, or something. That's the only thing I brought it up.
I, I, you know.
It wasn't, it wasn't to sue them, but.
I think we gotta find out what is legally acceptable. It's like, is this? And again, I caution not to defend anybody. We think this might go wait a few weeks, might as well wait and do it. There's no sense paying the money to get this and then by the time we're gonna handle this, it'll be six months around, they're gonna say, yeah, okay, we screwed up. You know, so, uh, have to beg for forgiveness than, uh, ask permission.
There might be something up that might be of interest to everybody. Lisa had mentioned you saw something about them having to do a post construction.
That's it. No, that, no, 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 no. No, no. This, this is the original, what was submitted with the site plan, I'm sure, okay. This, this is the post development.
Alright, so.
This is what I said is flawed because it's October.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's. Based on this eight hundred a day.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's just say they were doing it in October. That's my question.
Well, okay, somebody needs to tell me, cause, uh, I, I, what I understand, what I understand.
Frank's question is, were they approved for only three twenty-seven?
That's what it looks like.
My question is, is it as of October, we're running within the three twenty-seven? So that if this one month is the aberration, how much time and money we gonna devote if it's gonna be over with?
Yeah, but, but it doesn't matter. That, it doesn't matter because what they tested for Bob in October is it was a different use. It was, so it doesn't apply anymore. Clearly, uh, did we have this problem in October?
No.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. So, so this, this should be thrown in the garbage is my point. Because it is completely flawed because the use that they use does not exist.
That's still the mattress factory? Well, Richie came in November and told us about the.
Yeah, well, right.
Yeah, I know, but no one told me the postal service has been in it for a couple of months, so I'm assuming that was post.
They were operational the day that I went for that visit. They weren't at full capacity.
What month was that?
That was the November, the day that I remember meeting, I believe.
Oh, well, see, okay.
This whole thing's gonna come up that, that was the emergency rental because of this thing in court. This whole thing is gonna be very convoluted.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the issue, so.
Who knows by the time we go, but like I said, like, obviously we're gonna have everything added by March, who knows? Soon as our place of courage, we think we're getting out, so. You know, but that, that's what we do. We ask questions. So I love the two glaring issues though, right? One is the initial amount of trucks they presented to the land use board, which land use board approved is bogus. And the report they gave was done before they had US Postal in there. So that post construction report is invalid.
Well, the post construction report is completely, uh, completely useless.
Yeah.
And, and it probably at a minimum, it should be redone and resubmitted with the.
I always said, I always send a letter to Low Pat asking what the originally issued for greater studies. What, you know, this is how many trucks a day from the postal service own mission, there were over eight hundred a day. Did they file any papers with you for an emergency change in use? I mean, we don't know that Low Pat didn't give them. I, I don't, I don't know how land use works. I don't think, well.
I, I was gonna ask.
But I, I'm a big believer in the Lord give us, the Lord take us. So if they're okay with it. I, I don't know what you can do.
Mike, let me answer you this question. Hypothetically, you got a scenario, there's a, there's a big use change from what's testified to the what was built. And clearly the impacts are, are changed for whatever the youth, for, forget traffic, for something else, okay. I've never heard of being able to go, what's the mechanism that you would have as a municipality to go back to the original applicant or the owner and take issue with this, with the, with whatever the change is, that, that whether it's traffic, whether it's stormwater runoff, let's look at, uh, whether it's, uh, air pollution. I mean, that it's completely different than what they testified. What do you do?
Say that, you know, what you did is you misrepresented what the use was going to be, right? So your, your approval is invalid at a minimum because you present, cause like, think about that. Like you could come in and say, somebody completely lies about something. And then they built something completely different. It's a completely different operation. And the board says, wait a minute, you know, these are the findings that we had in the resolution of approval and this is what we did. So whether, now the other thing is, depending on the use change, you know, a lot of towns, even if it's a permitted use, you change from one use to another, you're still required to come in and file an application. So I'm not sure, you know, how their ordinances are set up, but that could also be another. I mean, again, these are all things you gotta flesh out and then John can ask.
Send a letter?
Yeah.
Take a look at the application and even maybe negotiate, okay, ten percent above that number.
We have an open rate for all that information.
Yeah. Okay, so somebody's talking to John about this?
Yeah, John's, we, we've already filed the open for all that information.
Well, no, no, I'm talking about sending it away.
Yeah, no, no, they voted to do that.
Language will take care of that with John.
Oh, okay, okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, the one, the one thing that I had. Just, uh, again, very quick. It relates to the Bates Road, the DOT grant, uh, that we spoke of last month. They, the, the announcements had just come out. Again, this is the twenty twenty-two grant for Bates Road. Which was for a hundred thirty-one six. There's, there's an approximate, and I'm gonna send out a little more formal memo on this. There's a, there's about a hundred and seventy thousand dollar shortfall. It's obviously quite significant. So we'll probably end up, if, you know, assuming we're gonna go forward with it. We just push it back or, or basically only do like half the road and then do, then apply, apply for the second half, the, for next year and handle it that way. But, but it's, uh, it's important only in the sense of budgeting for you guys. We talked about Rick Line Hole Road section to enough time, I won't mention it again this year. But so again, that's, that's out there and we'll have to deal with that next year with the budget. So that would be it for me for this evening.
Okay, thanks. And, and just one question. Mike, when you do prepare that, because we still need to know all the the outside costs on Rick Line two for our budget this year, you know.
Okay, gotcha.
Line item on.
Yeah, no, the soft costs are actually right here. This was, this was.
So that we have the true.
And, and that's included.
Okay.
Yep.
You have anything or have any projections?
That's exactly. I have a number of things. Zoning, the property being still being graffiti. Do you have any more on that?
Uh, we do actually, um. The whole area has been brush hog, the trees, the everything and everything else like that. And although I, I didn't meet with Larry this week, I met with him last week on the subject matter. And he was told that the owners out there were going to paint the buildings in the very near future to cover up the graffiti. And all the brush and trees and the unsightlyness has been removed.
I saw that.
Well, it looks good, but at the same right now, the building's short to stand out like it's. Before they were hit. Uh, but they are, uh, it is being dealt with.
Okay.
Recreation, buy those.
Did you look at? Yes. And I made, I compared them against the code and there was some cha, there was some mostly just changes. Like for instance, they had, had to be five to nine members. It's nine members in the code. So I just struck that. So, the, everything that I took out were all things that were inconsistent with the code. The only thing that was in there that wasn't in the code, but I thought I should bring to your attention was it said to be a member of the rec commission, you had to have a child that was of sports age to play or some language to the tune of, you know, an outstanding citizen. So, I mean, it's the committee, it's the town's pick. So I thought that should probably be stricken as well. I mean, I understand the reasoning behind it. You know, you want people to have kids in the program, but you might have somebody who's a great coach or a great rec member who isn't, and that's.
If someone's on the board with like a two-year appointment and their kid leaves, like, yeah, I feel like it's convoluted too, right?
Yeah, so, so I, that was a suggestion that I said, strike that. But for the most part, it was just like that, you know, five to nine. I mean, you're supposed to have a nine-member board, but it'd be like any other board in town. You know, if you lose some people or something and then you, you, you guys are looking for somebody to replace them.
Yeah.
That have a real interest in coaching or you're being a viable recreation. I mean, that's, uh, so that's stripping them out.
Yes. So I mean, I suggested that that be strict. I could just handle that. I'll take that out. And like I said, the other things were just that they were, you know, just stuff that was totally inconsistent with the code section. So I just struck that stuff. And it was again, stuff like that. Five to nine, it's just, no, it's nine members, that's what it is. And then on quorums too, by the way, and also there was some squishy language in there. And it was, again, stuff like that, five to nine, it's just, no, it's nine members, that's what it is. And then on quorums too, by the way, and also, there was some squishy language in there about if you had less than five, you could vote to have a meeting, and I go, no, you gotta have a quorum in order to make decisions. So, but other than that, that's it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the, um, recreation bylaws.
A second.
Any more questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barsting?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes. Like, we farm updates. We need more updates on that.
Well, the, the, the original deed and documents are missing. We're still waiting for Joe Bell County Council to get those to us. And, um, as a matter of fact, I got a call for, or an email from Frank Pinto and said, hey, could you just nudge Joe again? We still haven't gotten the document. So I sent Joe a letter, asked him to send it over. So as soon as we get it, we just file it. So, and we had copies of the ones that were done before, we still haven't got the originals, and then they couldn't find. So as soon as we get them, we'll file them, and then it'll be off the agenda.
Thomas Door Park Restrooms. Have you heard anything about whether?
Uh, you know, I did not even think to ask Joe, I just think that they're waiting for the laws to come in.
We just gotta have it by the spring anyway.
Yeah, right, right, right.
New business, looking for a motion to adopt Resolution sixty-six twenty-one to fund the developed res growth. Anybody wanna make their motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second it.
Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barsting?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Just McDermott? Yes.
Resolution sixty-seven, looking for a motion to adopt the Resolution sixty-seven twenty-one for, is that tax redemption?
It is.
Tax redemption, that resolution. Anybody wanna make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second, any questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barsting?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Just McDermott? Yes.
Resolution, looking for a motion to adopt Resolution sixty-two-one, it's a budget transfer number two, as indicated on a piece of paper, it was included in the packet. Anybody wanna make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any questions, comments, discussion?
Uh, my, my only comment was, again, when we did our budget last year, we we stripped a lot of departments of monies and resources to try to keep things under control. And, and, and I, I said at the time that I thought some of them might come back to bite us, and that is part of what's happening here with this transfer, and some of it came back to bite us. Uh, DPW ran out, we ran out of money for engineering, uh, a month and a half ago. DPW's at a position where, you know, we couldn't pay for fuel and things like that without a transfer. Um, you know, despite COVID, prices of everything escalated, and we stripped numbers that looked like they were reserves, but guess what? They weren't, and here we are transferring money.
Say it every year, we really work on shoestring budget, and, uh, anytime you take a couple bucks in here and put it there, it hurts us, so. Okay, we'll, we'll call that.
Mayor Barsting?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Just McDermott? Yes.
Looking for a motion to open a public hearing, ordinance number one fourteen twenty-one prohibiting memorials in township parks. Anybody wanna make that motion? Anyone want a second? Anyone for the public to like to come up and make a comment only on that issue, uh, the ordinance prohibiting memorials in the parks. You don't have to raise your hand, you just go up to podium, stick your name. I think he's going first.
John Duggan, thirteen bars, swallow score. Uh, one thought on, I understand the ordinance. It's, it, on the surface, it sounds a little bit harsh to me, so I would suggest that maybe you look for, uh, in an alternative way that would help the park and help the people. I mean, like, set up a tree park. Donate some money to plant a tree in the name of, or memory of, or whatever. And have a plaque, put the people's name on it. Take the check and plant a tree.
Thanks, man.
Are we talking about the trucks now?
Yeah. No, this is only on this ordinance, uh, for memorials and parks. No private, yeah? No, yeah.
No, I, I just came one, uh, it's, it's just put the sign, engine brake prohibited for the, for the truck driver from.
We're gonna talk about stuff.
Yeah, are you?
No, no, we're gonna talk about it.
I'm going, oh, okay.
Looking for a motion to close, uh, public hearing, ordinance one fourteen twenty-one. Make the motion?
Make the motion.
Second, looking for a motion to adopt, where it's number one fourteen twenty-one. Anybody wanna make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Anybody want a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call?
Mayor Barsting?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
No.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes.
The, the, I just wanna address the public comment. I hear you, and I, I thought so too at first, but here's, here's the dilemma with this. Depending, I, I guess basically you did make a good point. We'd have to regulate somehow how the memorials are placed, because it causes chaos for DPW to mow and weed whack. That's what the issue is.
Okay.
So if we put plaques in front of every tree.
No, I mean, just a, on.
A one plaque, like.
One, one plaque.
Oh, okay, yeah, something like that, I think, is certainly something we can discuss and, and be done, but that, that's, I, I, cause when we first started talking about it, I thought, this is not gonna look good, but DPW, and if you've been here, you hear Joe.
Yeah.
Tell you, well, you know, if we have to weed whack around that memorial, it looks like forty-five seconds, so I'm weed whacking times twenty-seven things, and now you need another guy for an hour and twenty-seven minutes a week to weed whack. So that's what it's really about, because it starts creating, uh, maintenance issues for the park. But that's a pretty good idea, so.
Control, you know, maybe benches on the path or something.
Yeah.
But just have a sort of centralized plaque.
Right, right, yep. But I do, thanks. Okay. Excel update. What are we doing on that?
So I had asked, um, I had just asked Eloise to please print out, um, a summary of the tax sale. I, I gave a, a summary of it also in my report. Just wanted to advise, that's what this looks like. They all did sell, we did the online tax sale again, which you guys approved earlier in the year. It went well. Um, all of them were sold, and we already have some people coming in to redeem those links, so, um, but it went well. We didn't, we don't own anything. That's always good.
Paul, you wanna make a motion for these three hires, or?
Uh, yeah, let me get to that section here. Yeah, the DPW for some seasonal part-time help, uh, Joe had interviewed, uh, Anthony Doran, a CDL operator, Christopher Chioffi, a CDL operator, and Seamus Felner, non-CDL, he's really kind of an emergency pair of hands. If needed, we call in if somebody regularly couldn't make. He interviewed, uh, these people and felt that they would all be a good fit into our, uh, part-time seasonal. So I would like to, I guess we make a motion to hire these folks?
Yeah, I think we all need a motion for that.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion that we hire these two folks.
Anybody want a second?
A second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Barsting?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Just McDermott?
Fire company, remember, Joe's not here, but I still, he usually does his due diligence to make sure that everybody's, uh, qualified, capable, and, uh, directed the community to be a member of fire company. So I guess I'll make the motion for him to, uh, make Suzanne Henshaw a fire company, and still remember, Steven Schmidt Junior has a firefighter, and Michael Feroni is a firefighter. Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Anybody have questions, comments on that? Roll call.
Mayor Barsting?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes.
On December seventh, we received a resignation from, uh, our zoning officer, Larry Creveling. I would resign by position as Greenwood Township Zoning Officer effective December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. Thank you for your opportunity, so we've been able to township these last few years. I'd like to say that I appreciate what Larry did for us the last few years. He came here to pick up for us when we had an issue with the old, uh, health issue, it was nothing bad. Unfortunately, he came here accepting to help us out on a job that was far different than what we expect from somebody today. And even for the last year or two, much more than what I think he agreed to. So I would like to make a motion and accept Larry's resignation with regret, and, uh, thank you for helping us out in a time of need. I'll make the motion. Anybody want a second?
I'll second that with regret.
Did I say that?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Roll call.
Mayor Barsting?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Just McDermott? Yes.
We need to transfer, I thought we did this.
Well, we, we haven't did it, we, we talked about it, we approved it, we just haven't done it officially. This is how.
Uh, if you remember, we were concerned about the total of doing both of them in one year, so we, we talked about doing one at a time, if we could do one now before the end of the year.
So we need a motion type to take what, over one, or?
Uh, we are going to.
Authorize you to sign something?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna gift it to the rescue squad, and you will have to sign it to.
Okay, so, and we do all, hey, did we make that motion, or that we gotta make the motion to authorize me to sign the transfer of the title of which vehicle?
Uh, the two thousand two, uh, F four fifty, uh, ambulance.
Yeah, so. Anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Anybody want a second?
I'll second it.
Any other questions, comments, discussion on it?
And just so that the, the public's clear on, the reason, uh, we're doing that, it's a town-owned ambulance, but a new ambulance is around two hundred and forty thousand dollars, give or take. Uh, we're, the squad wanted to get the title of this so that we might look at just having it re-outfitted. Uh, keeping the same chassis, but updating the box and things of that nature. Uh, we couldn't do it while the town owned it, so we need to have clear title to it, and that's what we're gonna look into.
We're rolling.
Mayor Barsting?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Just McDermott? Yes.
We're looking for a motion to renew this solicitor's permit for MJ Hoffens for Sun Run. I assume the chief did all the, uh, info on that. It's good to go.
Yeah, it's gonna go to him after you guys authorize that.
Anybody wanna make a motion to issue this solicitor's?
I'll make that motion.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments?
My only comment, I saw MJ working today up in Greenwood Chase, as we were marking sidewalks, and she was from neighborhood to neighborhood. That girl's got some hustle.
Roll call.
Mayor Barsting?
Yes.
Mr. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Marqueta?
Yes.
Just McDermott?
Thomas Door Park Planting Plan. Yeah, only, only that it's there. Take a look at it. The Open Space Committee's going to, um, formally, uh, look at it and prove that.
No access, but.
No action either.
Is there a colored version?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know what we.
So, so what, I'm gonna ask her for a digital version. She gave us three copies, and so Frank Pinto kept one, I have two. So if you guys wanna look at one here.
Oh, so we do have a colored version? Got it.
But they're bound, so it wasn't easy.
Our machine doesn't print colored versions?
It would, but that'd be expensive. I thought it'd be better to just, yeah, save the ink and have her send us a digital copy, so.
All right.
You can have one of these too, Paul.
This will basketball courts, painting and cameras. Yeah, Lisa, oh, Joe, he's not here. We were looking at trying to save the town money, and Joe had some ideas, so, Nick, I'll have to move it. Twenty twenty-two Fund Year Assessment Public Insurance Coverage Fund. What do we need to do on that, Lisa?
Um, I, I guess just, um, just, just review it. Um, essentially, it's just providing you guys with an update that we'll, um, have to discuss at budget, but I think it's, it's a moderate increase. It is in the, it's in the back of your pockets. So I just wanted to make you aware.
Okay. No action.
Sorry, no, no, just, I think it's, I don't know, I wanna say it's under a two thousand dollar increase, which is a small percentage, so.
We gotta do this warehouse discussion, cause I really relate to help these folks in the back row after they've been chopping it a bit to speak about that. So, would anybody have any objection if we open a public comment only on this issue now, so that if they wanna speak and go or whatever? Somebody wants to make that motion? Anybody want a second, second? Okay, public comments open regarding this warehouse discussion. If, I know you're dying to say something, come up, state your name and address, and speak your piece.
Yeah, we live on the, uh, Rivera Road, and it's just on, uh, the bedroom of the place on the road.
Yes.
And the, in the morning, like, five, six o'clock, the truck driver, who's, I'm a truck, used to truck driver, I know, it's, it's just, they might subjection for the just to know the check engine, I mean, engine brake.
Yeah.
That's it, it's just one switch, boom, boom, and it just, and it's gonna be, uh, uh, help a lot to us.
Yeah.
Just, because I know it's too hard to close the truck, traffic, and the, uh, traffic going up on the hill. It's not big hill, but there's, there's some of all too. But, uh, down, I, I think it's possible, just switch the engine brake.
Yeah. That's all. Okay, thank you, sir.
Sir, would you just, did you get your name?
Did you say your name and address, sir?
Sorry.
Yeah. Can you repeat it?
He needs your name and.
Alexander Boshewala, one fifty-four Rivera Road.
One fifty-four, thank you.
I'm Conley Wuchia, I live at one fifty Rivera Road. I lived here all my life, and, um, I'm gonna be for home people, so I know how this town evolved. So it's, um, that intersection's always been a very difficult intersection on the Strikers Road, and, um, the trucks have definitely increased by threefold, I believe. And, um, today I just stood out there, and there must have been three every two minutes. And they're parked, I have a picture of a park there, and I think the main concern, I think everybody's missing is the safety. Because not only the trucks come in and out, it's that, it's that road that's just unsafe. Um, closing the road sounds great, but I don't know if it's an option. Um, children walk from the town over to Rita's, then even to Raps, and then over to the library. Has anybody ever tried to walk across that road?
I have. I have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And now throw a truck on top of that, the car's not gonna see the kid. There's no, there's no sidewalk, there's no safety, there's, there's nothing there for the children. So I think that's a, a bigger concern for the children, because they even have Rita walks, and I know from the Greenwood School over to there, and that becomes a safety issue. So, um, and then throw, again, the trucks on top of it. So I think the, now, you know, not just the warehouse. The warehouse is a different factor, uh, on it definitely, but, um, the road and increased, uh, trucks, it just makes everything very difficult and loud. And I feel like, and I know this might sound wrong, but I feel like we're a load of moderate income there, and nobody kind of listens. I think if you put houses over there like Yovan Way, and children from that live in Yovan Way, I think people would listen a little bit more. So if you, you know, if anybody can take into consideration that we live over there and we can hear it, it, you know, try to figure out a solution. Um, you could definitely put a camera up in one of those rented towers by J, JCPN, I believe, or one of those, they rent the land, but the towers are over there. You can definitely put a nice view to see what's going in and out of the Strikers Road and along that road. So, but, um, but the safety is just a big issue, and, um, if you can figure that out. I know you, in the past, figured that road, and it was a great solution for a while to have the two lanes coming out of Strikers Road, but it's not working anymore. So, and then there's no sidewalks, so that's really the only thing I really wanted to say.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
My name's Kathy Dinglass, I live at one twenty-five Rivera Road also. Um, even though we're, like you said, Colleen said, but moderate to lower income, basically, I'm retired. I'm disabled, I've had cancer a bunch of times, other issues, and we're all working, most of us are working people, you know, start like with cops, start, start what, forty-five thousand a year, and teachers, you know, so we're your normal people. Safety's a big concern. Um, like she was saying, my grandchildren come over, and we walk to Rita's, and they're opening up again in February. And to walk over there, we have to dash, because you can look both ways, and also, some cars, it's gonna beat the red light over there at Dumont and Union Town Road, and they go through that light. God forbid we put another light at Strikers. Now you're gonna talk about another issue with that speeding car hitting a truck. Um, I, I believe with same thing she's saying, the safety is really a big factor over there, because I have to basically drag my grandkids or five and seven across that road trying for, to beat these cars. Most people are pretty good, you know, the weight, you know, but you do have a few that just don't care. The other issue I have is on Dumont. Some of these trucks are going down Dumont right now.
Yeah.
And if you know anything, the kids cross the street there, they're going at forty-five, forty miles an hour. Speed bumps might be a good idea, just for that, that area. I mean, but it's, you're just coming down that street so fast, and I'm worried about these trucks now, because when you come off of Union Town Road, that's Dumont right there, there's a curve, and as you're crossing the street, you can't see these cars coming. And you've got some little kids trying to go over there to Grandma's Chase to go play in the playgrounds up there, and it's hard. And so that's my, my issues, like with Colleen's too, is a safety issue over there, and I think Strikers Road. And so that's my my issues like with Colleen's too, is a safety issue over there, and I think Strikers Road closing up would be a good idea, honestly. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, same thing, yeah.
I know, I know, I but I just wanna get your attention. Okay, you don't want public comment? Okay, fine, that's fine. No, because I can answer, a question was asked before that I couldn't answer, this is about what what did they use when they generated the traffic data? When they did the original report.
Let's say no public comment.
I was trying to wait.
I was trying to wait, but you don't listen.
I don't listen, I was, I couldn't, okay.
I I share everybody's frustration with all these warehouses. And the attendant traffic, the safety issues and all of that. But I think also. We all need to take a deep breath and ask ourselves, you know, what can we realistically accomplish? At what cost? And. Are we willing to pay that price? Because. When you start talking about litigation. You're you're, I mean, it's just opening up the old checkbook, it it just the money flies out. And, you know, I don't know that we even have any standing over there, I don't know how. Much cooperation we can realistically expect from LoPacco, because it's a big variable for that. So, you know, they're not gonna mess that up. So I think we need to kind of temper our expectations here and focus on what we can do. And forget about, you know, the warehouses are not gonna go away, that's what we'd all like to do, we wish they were never built. But they're there and we're stuck with them, so it's kind of a thing is, you know, how can we mitigate the damage? And I'm not sure passing laws gets you there. I think you might have more luck with some moral suasion. To talk to, talk to these people. Explain to them, you know, and if they need a staging area. Maybe you think about ways to provide a staging area, because. You're gonna get some, all these laws, you're gonna have unintended consequences. And, you know, yet it's kind of like the problem you have with the hopeless people in New York City. You move them from one spot to another spot, and it's just. So you put up a sign here and they go over there.
Thanks.
One more question.
Yes.
Oh, definitely, this is just down in here.
Oh, oh, okay.
Go back up to the podium.
I just wanted to ask, are you guys talking with Phillipsburg about this proposed warehouse plan down by the river?
Sure, okay, once we close public comment, then we, if we choose to answer questions, we'll answer that.
Oh, that's it, oh, okay.
It's not question and answer, it's a public comment.
Oh, okay.
I understand, you haven't been here.
No, this is my first time.
Hopefully your last. Okay, anyone else? I'll make a motion, close, close public comment, all favor? I'll respond to Colleen?
Yes.
Yeah, I've been here too for forty years, only for all these issues, but. You're you're right, if you heard me earlier, that's exactly what I said, this is gonna be resolved through an infrastructure, not through laws, not through cease and desist. And and unfortunately for you, for where you live, it's not gonna happen, as I said earlier, in two months, four months, I don't even know if in two years, four years, it's a long process. The only way to overcome it, you're right, is you're gonna have to go with infrastructure for crosswalks, safe crosswalks, better intersection, building new roads. I mean, I I think building a road from Strikers, direct access to twenty-two, leave these a lot of problems.
By the asphalt.
Yeah, well, wherever, I, wherever, as long as it goes out to twenty-two. That's the bottom line, right?
Yeah.
I I agree with you, that's what I said earlier.
Yeah.
And Bill, I agree with you, we every meeting, you're here all the time, every meeting, you pass a law for this, law for that, it it's bizarre after, it's bizarre after a while. I I it's gonna be a long process, and and as you said, I said earlier, those warehouses are here to stay. So the problem is, well, you said mitigation, the only mitigation, it's not gonna be through enforcement, because you're never gonna have enough cops to have a cop there twenty-four hours a day, and even if you write the tickets. The same truckers don't come back all the time, so when you have a speeding issue, you put a cop on the road. Usually the cars on that road, they go to work, they go home, they go shopping, so when they're shopping, they're saying, do you see the power, writing tickets today? When they get to work, they have the coffee, the cooler, getting the coffee, they say, uh, Greenwood's gave me a ticket, they all got me Tuesday, then people start slowing down. These trucks aren't going to one location where they're having a cup of coffee, go, don't cut through Greenwood, the cops will get you. There's no effective enforcement tool here, unfortunately, but I hear you, and I agree with you. And safety definitely is an issue, the other day in front of my house, a truck was going by, a pickup truck. Passed it in a no passing zone, had to be going sixty, sixty-five miles an hour up Maple Drive, and I thought, boy, if a kid came from the side where the truck is. Because he wouldn't be able to see the other lane in front of that pickup truck, there's no way the guy would stop in time. So I I acknowledge, and I admit, there's an issue, it's a long time issue, and I told and said earlier about the the uh, for this month. We dropped the ball by not working with them, maybe getting a staging area, I think that was a flaw in us, but anyway, that's my comments.
You know, it's the construction from six at night to three in the morning when the peak time is and and do that, you know, do your construction at that time.
Yeah, and to you, no, I have not talked to anybody in Phillipsburg, I don't think anybody else has, I was speaking for myself about that, I I don't even know what we could do there, it's so far removed from us that uh.
Well, I was just wondering, because of congestion that it's gonna cause on five nineteen up at twenty-two coming from the other direction.
Absolutely.
Because we've already got enough issues, but, you know, going up, now we're talking the other way.
Yeah, so, but anyway, anybody else?
Yeah, can I address the staging area, we made different views on this, my opinion is staging here is just not a truck stop. And personally, I don't think you should have a truck stop store in town, especially a truck stop that's supporting a warehouse. In another town that is violating, in my opinion, the amount of trucks that are coming out of it, so I I don't think a staging area is a good idea, but that's just my opinion.
That that's mine as well, um someone approached me today about using the car dealer as a staging area, and I just think it's a bad idea bringing in more truck traffic to the town, and it's it's gonna be a truck stop.
And I'll I'll be honest with you, I don't think a staging area is sold as much anyway. There's gonna be other warehouses. There's gonna be other warehouses opening up, by the way, this is on, this is the only warehouse that's probably at full capacity right now, so we got twenty-two. That's, what is that, like? Ten times the size of?
It's like, this is.
It's like six times the size, where do you think those trucks are gonna go? They're gonna have to stage maybe, I don't know.
I don't know about staging.
I don't know.
Probably go to the pack twenty.
Yeah, I don't know about staging, but I think stickers.
But just to be clear, I was only talking about staging for this month.
Yeah.
I hit with this last minute issue.
Okay.
We we screwed up by not working with it, because we could corral them out of one location, I'm not even saying SMP, but I think the Phillipsburg wall was in preference.
I I see them staging.
Yeah, I don't know that that's like an approved staging area, I think like SMP, they're just pulling in their apartment.
Oh, alright.
So, but I, but the point was, is the postal service is willing to negotiate with the mall, the park, they're willing to pay Low Paccon and Greenwood Police Officers. To be at the mall, so you can watch all the trucks, and somebody down at the thing, they were direct traffic. And they would only let the trucks from the mall come that can fit in, so I I was only talking for the month, I'm not looking for long term staging areas, I just want to clear that up, but. But I I still say the answer's through infrastructure, and that's not gonna be on the night issue, but. Anyway, anybody else wanna respond? Okay, no, we can move on, but is anybody, what what are we doing with these proposed ordinances? Wait till next month, do you wanna have a special, well, let's talk, if you wanna have a special meeting next month, just on warehouses, I have no problem. Um, the only reason I said that is. Yeah, and and I, we gotta come up with a.
I'll I'll leave it up to you, if you want to, now, do it now, but I'd rather come in one late. I think we should bring in attorney, land use attorney, the engineer. The police chief. And what I said earlier, because we're gonna get all in the same page, if we're gonna put up a sign, let's make sure the sign's enforceable, so we need to know him, why he needs to enforce it. He has to write the ordinance, appropriate release or inform to the sign, and just be intelligent about this, that's all I'm saying, so I have no problems, and we'll start talking dates.
Did we ever find out about the forty-eight hours? Forty-eight hours?
I know that was John, because I'm.
Well, I I have an opinion on that, but. I don't, I don't think that.
Yeah, it's a public meeting, yeah.
I don't, I know I didn't look into it. But. Is I not, can I go for it? I just don't think. It meets the spirit of that law, that law, I think, is designed for, if you're having a parade, community day, you need that piece of thing, you're gonna shut it down for a couple of days. You usually do that with a prior notice, so that somebody doesn't come barrel through.
Yeah.
Hurt people. It's only for forty-eight hours, it's not gonna be effective, somebody had mentioned about closing for forty-eight, opening for a day, I think that's very sophomoric, I just don't think. I I I as a mayor wouldn't wanna sign that order, uh it it's not a long term answer, I just, I just. I just think it would make us look really bad to do something like that, that's my opinion, but hey, I'm only one vote, you people are talking about yourselves.
I mean, I I just think, right now, I I don't know.
Did we get an opinion on it? John give an opinion on it?
Yeah, no, I didn't even, I didn't ask, I don't know, I'm just saying that I.
No, I get what you're saying, the only thing that's concerning is from Thanksgiving on now, um the residents had to hear the noise, deal with it. Uh on Rivera Road where, you know, it's Christmas, it it's holiday, it's a holiday season, and they have to deal with it. And I was just thinking outside the box, where we can at least give them, you know, some peace and quiet, preservation of, you know. Uh of their welfare, health, where we can maybe at least at least close it for uh Christmas Eve. Where they don't have to deal with that noise, they should, they should be able to enjoy it, you know, time with their family instead of listening to uh engine braking all day. But that's just my.
Yeah.
I know it's. That's just my opinion, though. And I'm hoping we leave it, you know, this problem for next year, it's just, right now, what can we do for them for the holiday season?
I'm just still wondering what the legal people.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know if we can't.
Yeah.
Do a legal, I know, that's a moot discussion.
I mean, municipal bodies have the ability to obviously shut roads, like for parades, you know, things like that. I don't. I I think it's a fair point about Christmas Eve and do it, but I don't know, I I just, I I'm just a big believer in the spirit of law, not just the letter of the law. And the spirit of law for that is to allow you the flexibility to use your own road when you need to benefit the whole community for something. I I, you know, but it's a fair point, the Christmas Eve to do that, but.
I've noticed, though, maybe Mike can respond to this, I've seen places where, like, if there's a lot of traffic by a mall, they shut down side roads. Like, when I was living up in Burn County, they would shut down all the side roads going to the Golden City Plaza, or now, I don't know, it's called now Westgate.
Yeah, well, listen, you have the authority to shut roads.
I mean, they shut it because of traffic, not because of, like, unleaking traffic, they would just put a.
Yeah, like cities do that now, they close the, like, so they have a mall that you can walk on, so that they can't.
Could be considered, it's, it could be a consideration, that now, you know, the traffic is, I'm just saying, I don't think it's only for parades, though.
Right, and I don't wanna say too much in the public session, but then you gotta remember that when you're under the hot light of the deposition, and you're getting questioned as to the motives for doing that, you wanna be pure as the driven snow. That's all.
I I wanna feel comfortable. I wouldn't feel comfortable signing that, because I guess if that authorized a mayor's order. I have to do, I'll sign it, but I'm gonna sign it with an explanation and topic, for me, anyway, so, but we wanna talk about that in private?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And I just wanna add, the folks, the letter folks were with the engine brake. You know, they create the law, the ordinance and everything, and then found out it was completely in enforceable, and the county's actually opposing us putting engine braking signs up. However, uh Joe and I, we we own the signs and everything else like that, and one of the thoughts was, before I knew it was unenforceable. One of the thoughts was, it's not gonna curb everybody, but it might curb some, so we're going to look for existing sign poles. That are already up, we're not gonna establish a new one, and get a sign or two up there, um and hopefully some good natured drivers are. Won't, and so maybe that'll help reduce it, and the other thing I wanna point out to is that the the new current warehouse. The the Jake braking was really going on well, well before that, and the type of trucks that are being run from the warehouse closest to Route fifty-seven. The straight jobs and things of that nature are really more prone to the Jake braking than the trucks that are coming into the US Postal Service. And I've been in Grasslot just a ton, because I go there all the time, and I look over and I see immediately the culprits per se. Um, and it was there long before this, which everybody can test to, it's not a two month problem here, it's been an ongoing problem. So hopefully a couple of signs, even though they're not. Might get the attention of a couple of drivers, maybe a friendly note to the people who own the big operation at the top. About maybe helping us out on a subject matter, again, a letter, you know, not cease and desist, or in, but a letter and say, hey, look. You know, the majority of your trucks come down five nineteen and up there, there's a lot of Jake braking going, and there's a a community there, um that it's affecting. Again, maybe a nice letter. So that's what I have on it.
Is it, anybody else?
Do we wanna pick a date for the?
Oh, yeah, just, yeah, that's what it's starting, that's what it's all. How much does we need to give, forty-eight? Interested to the week between Creighton and New Year's, or nobody wants to be bothered that week? Or you wanna go into the New Year? Our reorg's the sixth, right?
Correct.
You want to stay after the reorg?
Final name?
That's all.
Mike Lavery, Mike Frinelli, good for you, somebody wanna check the drill tomorrow? Because you plan on being here anyway, Mike, right, then?
The sixth, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, don't worry, so it'd be.
Eleven minute meeting.
What time is your, what time is your meeting, seven o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, it's good for me.
Okay. So we're everybody good, I guess everybody's good with that date, at least, right?
That's. Damn.
Yes.
Yes, Bill.
I could honestly say I could be there seven AM too this long, it doesn't matter. Okay, so we're just gonna do the reorg and then go right into this, right? Okay, so that's good. Okay.
I'm sorry, do I, I do have to readvertise for that, though, right, because it's currently the advertising.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, but yes.
Speed bumps on Main Street, where I talk about now, you wanna do that next month too, I mean, is that a separate issue from the warehouse discussion?
Well, it was more not warehouse, but truck moving.
I don't know if the residents want it or not, but I know we've been having issues with trucks now, more?
First of all, there's County Road.
Well, I'll bench you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess you could cross that home on. I guess we wanna ask them, you know?
I'm just saying.
I don't even know that the residents want it, I just maybe it's something to consider.
We visited that in the in the past, uh prior to when I was chief, and residents didn't want that.
Because it might cause noise for trucks bouncing and.
Yep, yeah, we we looked into that thoroughly, and the residents took a great exception to the idea. Well, with that being said, I live right there at the railroad bridge and deal with the truck traffic, the 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 clanging and bouncing.
I can imagine.
Being said, I'm for it.
Well, we got one that may don't be a little shorter.
Yeah, alright, okay. Budget things we need to come up with now, Saturdays or weeknights?
I don't like Saturday days if we.
Saturday, really?
Don't like or you mind it, yeah?
I don't mind.
I I like Saturday mornings, eight o'clock, if everybody else is.
For you, you're a basket.
Well, and and.
Saturdays are inconvenient for me, but.
Yeah, that should be good.
Okay. Okay, so eight o'clock on a Saturday morning, everybody seems good, Paul?
No, it's inconvenient, but if if the group, I work on Saturdays, but.
Yeah.
You know, if if that's the group's number, that's the group number.
Fifteenth, twenty-ninth?
As long as I'm uh.
Yeah, you'll be fine.
So fifteenth, eight o'clock?
Yes.
Okay.
And the twenty-ninth, eight o'clock, that's good. Wish now to email tomorrow, remind everybody, Lisa.
Do you wanna pick another date, because you know we're gonna need another one?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
You're gonna need a third one, you think? You're gonna need a third one, you think? We might need more and more, because this is gonna be a tough, tough budget year.
Well, I
It would just save us on supplication.
The twelfth would be President's Weekend, something you might wanna go away, ski or something like that, but Nineteenth, February nineteenth, sound good? February nineteenth, sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. First week, let's have Rich and Joe, they're always the two biggest project items. We'll get that out of the way first. And then when we go to the second one. If we can get into administrative offices and stuff, legal and all that. And then the next one, I guess, is when we meet, that's when we start working backwards, cutting stuff out of everything, after all the dream sheets are in, so, okay. Okay, correspondence, anything else under new business? Correspondence, Lisa?
We dealt with some of these.
Yeah.
Oh, the letter from Warren County Engineering, that is a request that a resident, one of our residents sent for removal of a school bus sign, did you guys see that?
Yeah, I
Yeah, I see that.
We have, that's from two thousand and five, we sent that letter, asking for the sign.
Very, yeah.
But
I mean, I don't think, I don't think we can vote on anything.
We have to find out from the school board, if there's stops there, if there's stops there, why would we remove it?
Well, the resident said that there aren't any, but again, that's what, so, but yeah.
Whether it's a high school bus or a grammar school bus, you don't know that. But there's certainly a provision here that
Sure they don't.
Yeah, can you call school, ask?
Right.
Send an email? Let's get it documented.
Yeah, because there's a provision here that says the signs must be maintained and can be removed if they're needed, so.
There you go.
The kids could change, they, you know, their family could move
Greenwich School District should know, even if there's a special light bus, because it could be a special light bus, they go to Greenwich or Phillipsburg, it could be going to Berkeley Heights or somewhere. So, but Greenwich should know, because they'd be fighting to build for that transportation anyway. Okay. But the sewer, we already, that we already did it, right?
Yeah, we did.
Excellent, we did, and space for our deer carcass removal, Paul?
We did, we talked about this last year, and I went back and I listened to the tape, and Joe said, we don't need it, so.
Okay. Open up the, I'll make a motion, we want a public comment again for any issue.
My second.
All favor?
Alright.
Anything left you wanna say? Seeing none, I'll make a motion, close public comment.
My second.
All favor? All favor, aye? I'll make a motion, go to executive session to Okay, sure.
Listen, I just wanna apologize to your audience, there was a video for my participation and the back and forth between us, you know. It's not becoming of a community man act that way, so I apologize to everybody, especially Paul, as the mayor, training, and said that was appropriate, so, um
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion, go to executive session for purpose, purpose of discussing contracts, bonds. Personnel issue, going shared service agreement and litigation. All favor? Thank you. Coming next month? We don't have